Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of October 15, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all councilors are present. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? I had one, I was just going to move the proclamation up before the special presentation. It's usually that way. Everybody okay with that? Any other changes? I see none. Councilmember Agnew asked for a point of personal privilege. Go ahead.
Just like the public to know that we're going to have a memorial service for Kirk Robinson, one of our firefighters that passed away from a presumptive disease. It'll be October 24 at 1:00 at Overlake Christian Church in Redmond, and that's at 9,900 Willow's Road. If you've never been to a firefighter funeral, it's a pretty impressive ceremony. So, we're going to kind of do a tribute to this man's life that basically gave his all for his community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see here. Next on the agenda is public engagement opportunities. Help us in development of our cultural plan by attending the Arts Commission Stakeholder Meeting at City Hall Friday, October 18 from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and Monday, October 28 from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. On the road, Bothell Auto History Thursday, October 17 at 7:00 p.m. at the Bothell Library. Waste Mobile Friday and Saturday, October 18 to 19 at the Seattle Times Building from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Disposal Waste, our website for a complete list of items. I think they take paint now. Yes, no? No? Okay. That looked like a no. Anyways, Halloween on Main Street, October 31 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Bring the Little Ones for a safe Halloween fun.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I think there's also a meeting October 12, 10 to 1 for the Arts Stakeholders Meeting.
For the... Okay. Can we confirm that? Anybody? No? Okay. All right, moving on. So, we're going to go to the proclamation. The deputy mayor's going to give it because she has a longstanding history with the Northshore Schools Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor, for indulging me. This proclamation is for the Northshore Schools Foundation, All In for Kids Month. Whereas the Northshore Schools Foundation exists to raise funds and build community partnerships that enhance Northshore School District priorities, and whereas the Northshore Schools Foundation works to remove barriers by funding backpacks for kids, the Opportunity Scholarship Fund, basic needs aid, and homeless services, and whereas the Northshore Schools Foundation exists to build skills for life by funding student leadership, career days, life skills training, and student recognition, and whereas the Northshore Schools Foundation has granted over $2 million to schools in the Northshore School District and aspires to provide funding and resources that benefit each of the over 22,000 students in the district, and whereas the Northshore Schools Foundation represents the public arm of support for public education in the Northshore area and is funded solely through private contributions made annually from supporters, and whereas the Northshore Schools Foundation has mobilized the significant involvement of over 8,000 people in support of their mission, now I, Andrew Raym, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Northshore Schools Foundation All In for Kids Month in the City of Bothell, signed this 15th day of October 2019, on behalf of Andrew Raym. So, here to receive the proclamation is Miriam Juritz from the Northshore Schools Foundation.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for what you do for our kids in the area.
All right, next on the agenda is the special presentation, Snohomish Health District Update with Heather Thomas. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you for having me today. I'm Heather Thomas, Public and Government Affairs Manager for the Snohomish Health District. And before I begin, I want to thank Councilmember Olson for being a great representative on our Board of Health. I think he's been bringing a lot of voice to this area, so thank you for Councilmember Olson's work. We wanted to share a little bit about what the Snohomish Health District has been doing on behalf of Bothell, working to make things simpler, safer, and healthier, and we have a little bit of a recap of what we've accomplished. For simpler, there's been a lot of efforts on online permitting and online services, as well as some quality improvement processes, and what that has resulted in is reduced number of days to process refunds and other online permits. So, here in 2018, refunds would be if somebody applied for a business, like a restaurant, and then decided they didn't want to move forward with that, or if there were septic permits or others. It was a little about 26 days to do that refund, and it's down to less than 20 days. We're also on our website, you can visit our page on simpler, safer, healthier, and we show other data on average length to get permits and total number of inspections. Another simpler is we have piloted a new online learning management system for childcare providers across Snohomish County. They have some requirements to do Stars trainings to keep current with their childcare outreach, and this is a great benefit to providers throughout the county because they can do it either in their home or as a combined training in the clinic or in the childcare setting. So, this chart shows, we launched this at the beginning of the year, and the orange bubbles are the total number of completed courses by people across Snohomish County, and the blue bubbles are the total number of unique registrants in the system, and we're continuing to add to this. So, these are things like how to safely clean and disinfect child cares, talking about adverse childhood experiences, and a variety of topics that we continue to add to those. There are surveys to find out how they thought the online service was, as well as what are some additional topics that they would be interested in learning in the future. And customer feedback, if you come into the building to our customer service, either for permits or birth certificates, death certificates, or some other public records, they ask your input. We also have an online survey, so if you use our online permitting system, you'll get an email asking for a service, customer service feedback. So, they've been tracking, the blue is in person and green is online, and we're continuing to report in on that as a leadership team. For safer, we've done a lot of effort around suicide prevention, still considerably more to be done, but one of my staff members has been doing Question, Persuade, Refer, or QPR trainings across the county. This is being done with PTA groups, youth groups, and other community coalitions, and we trained 500 community members on how to prevent suicide or how to talk about suicide with their youth, and just 100 of those within the last six months. So, stay tuned, there's more coming as well. This chart is 6th, 8th, 10th, and 12th graders in the Biannual Healthy Youth Survey. This is for Snohomish County only, but it shows the number of people that have suicidal ideation is increasing, so this is one of the strategic areas that our staff will be working on in the next year.
Can I interrupt you for just a quick second on that slide? Do we have any intel on reasoning why that's increasing?
It's all tied to mental health and the need for more services. We are in the final stages of putting together a community health assessment, which looks at a number of health indicators, and suicide is one of the key areas. Some of it is have been doing better of having a trusted adult that they can turn to. Some of it is working with the media on how we talk about things in the news, if there is a suicide or suicide attempt. And then the other piece that we've been working on is postvention, so if there's a suicide attempt in a school, how can that school help wrap around staff and other students to prevent another attempt from happening?
Sorry, that one's a gripping slide.
I just wanted to go back to the other slide because you said STAR, and I just wanted you to say, what is STAR?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me that. It's a statewide certification. I don't remember what the acronyms are for. It's not just the Health District, there's other trainings that are put on through, I believe DSHS and Early Learning were one of the providers, but by doing these online classes, they satisfy some of their hours. I can follow up with you on that, though. Safer, food safety is typically where people associate with the Health District, is the inspectors out making sure that the food is prepared in a safe way. We completed over 4,500 inspections in the last year, responded to 472 food illness complaints, and processed over 1,200 temporary food events. Fair season and community festivals and farmers markets are our very busiest season with all the food trucks and stands around Snohomish County, so it keeps our team very busy. Needle cleanup, City of Bothell, we'd like to thank the Police Department for being a partner with this. We've created the kits that community members can come pick up for their cleanups. We've given out close to 1,300 needle kits since we started this almost two years ago, and just since we started the program, there's been over 7,600 needles safely disposed of. The other piece is safe walking routes. We did audits of all the elementary schools across Snohomish County, and then we've worked with eligible cities to nominate them for Complete Streets Awards, and so there were four cities in Snohomish County that were awarded through the Washington State Transportation Improvement Board, $1.3 million to do some of those capital projects. Moving on to healthier, our staff are working with dental providers to make sure that they're doing increased cancer screenings, so they did a training on how they can do when they're coming in for regular cleanings or checkups, that they can check for mouth and throat cancer, as well as talking to them about the importance of vaccination, and that's helping get some of our vaccine, our immunization rates up in the county. And healthier starts, we have helped over 1,000 babies off to a healthy start through our WIC Nutrition Program, and in the last two years, we've been piloting an effort through our SNAP Ed or Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program to do physical activity programs in the summer. So, the two that we did last year was Hawthorne Elementary in Everett and then Sultan Elementary. There are certain requirements on percentage that have the free and reduced lunch, but we're looking at other schools that we can partner with. So, when they come in for their free lunch, we piggybacked and had a 60 to 75-minute physical activity program for six weeks and had about 40 students over the last summer do that. So, we'll be looking at opportunities, we might be able to expand that. And near and dear to Bothell's heart, we did have a measles response that involved the Northshore School District. This kept our staff quite busy in partnering with the school district and trying to contain that case, which we were fortunate that there was just the one case in Snohomish County. And we did also partner and have immunization education at Northshore's Back to School Fair. Some of our program highlights, many people don't know all the different disciplines that are employed at the Health District. We have a little over 130 employees at the moment that range anywhere from public health nurses to disease investigators, customer service, emergency preparedness, IT, and behavioral health specialists. Our focus has really been on rebuilding the agency. There's been a number of changes at the Snohomish Health District, but we're trying to build a bigger, stronger organization, and a lot of that's been happening through online service delivery, improving our infrastructure, and more transparency and accountability, and that theme of transparency and accountability is something you'll see a lot more in 2020. I went through a number of the food permit numbers, but also in environmental health. We address other complaints, so nuisance properties, septic complaints. We inspect over 500 pools across schools, apartment complexes, and other public pools, and it's not just to do chemical testing, but it's also to do injury prevention, so making sure that we're preventing drownings, that they have locking devices, that there's flotation devices and other types of things so children can't get in accidentally. And then over 200 pool, public and private kitchens and school equipment like science labs and playground equipment. In our communicable disease division, these are Bothell-specific numbers. So, in the last year, we've had 19 families within Bothell that have been served through our children and children and youth with Special Healthcare Needs Program. A lot of this is referrals and coordination with providers. We've investigated 134 cases of STDs in 2019 so far. We've also provided health screenings for refugees that have settled here in the Bothell area, investigated 27 cases of communicable diseases, and then our Vaccine Preventable Disease Program works with clinics and healthcare providers, and we've provided three children compliance checks, so that's making sure that those clinics that provide vaccines to children are safely storing those vaccines at proper temperatures, they're following all the procedures, and then a clinic can also invite us in to do a quality assurance check. And so, we've done two in Bothell, where we do a quick analysis and give them any best practices or ways that they can improve their immunization rates or information to their patients. In an ideal world, we would have an equal balance of prevention and outbreaks. That's a lot of where our Healthy Communities Team is trying to focus on, is the prevention, trying to do as much upstream, focusing with early childhood and young adults. Originally started with obesity prevention and tobacco, and it's grown from there, but this is also largely grant-focused. So, when there's a new issue, dollars get funneled into an area, but typically get taken away from another. And so, with that and reduced staffing, we tend to see something more like this, where there's less on prevention and much more on the response and outbreak mode. A couple of those examples, obviously the measles case here in Bothell, there's also a hepatitis A case involving one restaurant. To give a scale, working on that restaurant involved about 25 employees and a little over 100 hours of work time, just responding to one case. That's why there's been a big push at the state level to do a coordinated public health funding ask. So, in 2019, we went to legislature to get additional funding across the state. The ask was $100 million per biennium. We were successful in getting $22 million appropriated to the governmental public health system. This is State Department of Health, tribal public health, local public health, and the State Board of Health, and those focus areas are really communicable disease, so focusing on response as well as STD investigation, and also looking at some environmental health and data and assessment. And this will be an ongoing ask at the state. Some ways that you can help is to spread the word about public health, and I'll get to that in just a minute, connecting us with your community partners on how we can help provide more public health here in Bothell, getting involved in any policy or planning opportunities or work groups, and then helping to advocate on our behalf for sustainable public health funding. So, also in this year, we've done a lot of work to increase our outreach to communities in different vehicles. There's a number of newsletters, some are targeted for the providers, such as the childcare outreach or to clinicians, but there's also some on Food for Thought, Healthy Communities, what we're doing in your area. We've also launched a blog, so the community can sign up for that blog. It comes out once or twice a month, and you can go to our website, snohd.org/notifyme, and receive emails if there's a new press release or health alert or any other type of publication posted. And we're also open to come to your events. We've created an event request, and we've been tracking this, so look forward to reporting other ways we've been here in Bothell. And with that, if there's any questions?
Any questions? I'm good.
All right. Thank you for your support.
Yep, problem. Next on the agenda is the City Manager Council Committee Reports. All right, City Manager.
Thank you very much. You have a letter in your packet. It's addressed to Congresswoman Delbene with regards to the medical device manufacturing tax and the request to pass a permanent repeal by Congress, and we wanted, because we don't have a federal legislative platform, we only have a state, we felt that it was important for council to see this and to provide support to our biotech life sciences in Canyon Park, and so we wanted you to see the letter and hopefully get support for it so we can send that along. And if you have any specific questions, Jeanie Ash, our Economic Development Director, is here as well.
Is everybody okay with sending the letter of support to respond? Okay, sounds good. Yep. Any committee reports? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So, I just have one. Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board, we authorized a change in the regional transportation plan project status for the Sound Transit Downtown Redmond Link Extension Project, a change from candidate to approved status. It's a 3.4-mile extension of Linklight Rail from interim terminus at Redmond Technology Station to downtown Redmond and is due to open in 2024. Had a discussion about tolling and the Seattle Squeeze, formerly known as the period of maximum constraint. I think it's easier to understand Seattle Squeeze. Tolling of State Route 99 Tunnel will begin November 9, which is, I'm sure, to cause backups, I'm sure. The lowest rate is with a good-to-go pass. It's $2 extra if you don't have a good-to-go pass. So, between, the Seattle Squeeze is basically between 2019 and 2024. There are numerous projects happening that will put a strain on the commutes in and around Seattle, and I didn't know this, there are over 400,000 people who go into Seattle each day. So, lots of people that get mixed up in all the traffic and construction projects. And then finally, there was a report on the Puget Sound Regional Council Bicycle Pedestrian Work Program. They sent out a regional bike and pedestrian data survey to cities and had a 97% response rate. I'm sure we were one of the first to turn ours in. 60% of the cities have a Complete Streets Program, which I didn't, I didn't know, but I know we're one of those. And then a pedestrian access to transit pilot project and infrastructure, discussion of infrastructure policies and regulations, inventory, and an update to the 2018 regional bicycle network. So, more to come on that, but that was, that was our meeting last Thursday.
Councilmember Agnew?
The Arts Committee met the other day, and just wanted the council to know that they haven't forgot about the Living Wall. What they're doing right now is they're putting sheetrock, a sheetrock on it so they can present some of the art forms that come in. They're going to go out to the citizens and get input from the citizens is what they'd like also. They want to make the correct decision on that. So, they are moving forward in that direction.
Councilmember Zornz?
Yeah, LTAC met today, and one item is kind of a community interest one, is the tree lighting for Lucky is going to be December 1, and they've done a lot of planning and they've incorporated the city to help them with all their permitting. It's on Thanksgiving weekend. They're going to try to have a holiday market that's going to be reminiscent of what happens in Europe, and that starts at 2:00 in the afternoon. There'll be 40 canopies and four food trucks, and Santa arrives at 5:00, and then handicap parking will be at the Wells Fargo Bank, and there's more details, so stay tuned to social media for that. Street Sense got, I think you may remember that, we got a notice that Street Sense would be here doing drone images, and evidently they got some really cool ones at Bridlevale Falls, and then also in a tree watching the crows fly in, so that would be something to look for. And I guess they got some beautiful imagery of a foggy morning on the slough. They got lots of great images and interviews for their blogs to promote tourism here, which leads me to a next little feather in our cap. E-Commerce Summit awarded our website as the best website for an annual tourism budget under $5 million. So, we did good on that. There's still dialoguing about the excise tax for the hotels in Snohomish County. That will come before us later, and then there was also some dialogue about what's happening with Wayne and some hard decisions, and some interesting feedback from the folks that are part of the LTAC community, and, you know, we can have those conversations later because that's ongoing and just getting started, so. But anyway, that was what we covered for LTAC.
All right, here, Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, let me add, December 1 at tree lighting, we will also have a Bothell Farmers Market located at First and Main from 3 to 7:00. So, that also will be a part of tree lighting. More to come on that as well. I did attend the Bothell Park and Recreation Meeting for Prose Plan on October 10, and Councilmembers Zornz, you were there as well. There were about 40 to 50 people there, and they were very excited about being part of this, of the prose plan. 1,200 people answered in response, but I want to say that Nick Stup is also going to Inglewood High School to listen to the youth voice, so I appreciate that. I also want to say thank you to Tracy Perkowski, because she went out, she came to the Friday Market, she went out everywhere she could to get people to respond to this. So, I just want to talk a little bit about the theme from the attendees. They really love their trails and their parks, and they really need to understand the balance between community need and, and the funding that's needed to maintain these parks. We have, I think I counted, 27 parks, and it takes a lot to maintain them. People would love, love their trails, they want to see them all cleaned up and with signage on them and ready, ready to use and in a healthy way. They like their picnics and playground areas and river access. That was really some of the things we heard from the people. But as a city, we must also remember that maintaining them is really important, and that people need to understand this as well. So, the requests were signage at parks, skateboard parks, movies in the parks, dog park, and I think we have to maintain what we have and talk to our community more about how we're going to do that. So, it was a great meeting. We hope that people can come to the, everyone that was there will be emailed the date and time of the next Wayne meeting so that they can talk about what they'd like to see at Wayne. But again, I will say cautiously that maintenance needs to be considered as well as what the community wants.
Okay, moving on to visitor comment period. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through the member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And the first one is Mr., oh, sorry, Ryan McRivin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Ryan McRivin. I'm here on behalf of the University of Washington, Bothell, and also tonight, representing Cascadia College as well. Here to comment on the e-scooter pilot program, which you'll be hearing later tonight on the agenda. I apologize, I have to dash and won't be able to stick around for that portion of the presentation, but I will watch, and I'm sure it'll be an enthralling discussion that you'll have later on. We are supportive of the extension of the pilot program for the 180 days that you're considering. When the pilot program launched in July, we were in summer quarters, so our student population on campus was relatively limited. Since we've come back to class with Cascadia on September 23 and U of Bothell on the 25th of September, I will say, anecdotally, scooter usage has increased on campus, and so far, I have not received any direct reports of any injuries or any of the safety concerns I know that were raised previously. It's something we are continuing to monitor closely, along with potential impacts to ADA accessibility. We do think this has been a workable program and look forward to soliciting further comment from, further feedback from campus via survey and working closely with the city in terms of developing the ordinance that may be going forward that you may be considering. So, all in all, I think it's been a, definitely a positive for the campus. There are still some things we certainly want to work out for the campus with Lime. We certainly would be interested in pursuing a formal agreement, perhaps of our own, with Lime, to seek out things such as discounts for students, workout. We already worked out, obviously, the, the speed zone reduction, the, with geofencing around campus, so they slow down to seven miles an hour, which has been great. That was largely our concern, was having those scooters zip down the promenade in the middle of campus in the midst of all these students. And again, so far, that hasn't, we haven't had any, any major collisions that I'm aware of at this point. So, thank you for your work on this. I'm happy to be a resource for you, and I'm happy to work, obviously, with your Economic Development Director to make sure that stays a success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Fuller.
My name is Cindy Fuller, and I live at 9717 Riverbend Drive, and I was here last week at the Parks Rec and Open Space Workshop, and a day or so later, I learned that you had had a study session on highest and best use of the Wayne Golf Course, and that was a shock to my senses. The main concern I have about this plan is safety and access. The main concern I have about this plan is safety and access. The turning into and out of 96th Avenue Northeast is a religious experience at best, as Councilmember McNeil can tell you during rush hour. This morning, I was going to work and one of my neighbors was trying to turn left on her bicycle into the Wayne Parking Lot to get on the Burke-Gilman Trail. And it took her over a minute to get onto the property. We need to consider very carefully what the highest and best use would do to the traffic and the safety of the people who are trying to access the Burke-Gilman Trail and just get on 96th Avenue. And I hope you take those considerations into mind as you proceed in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Philip Moser.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Philip Moser. I live at 9709 Riverbend Drive, which makes me the 12th closest driveway to the gravel parking lot at the front nine. I listened twice and very carefully to last week's presentation by the consultant. And I share, I think, some of the concerns that were expressed by council. There will be opportunities for feedback. I will join them, but I also wanted to jump the start line on a couple. There was a lot of talk about highest and best use. I was an appraiser for 18 years. I know about highest and best use. It doesn't stand alone. It involves and includes legal, practical, reasonable, and economic. But it's not strictly economic. Council pointed out that this is a policy decision, what's done with that. And I don't believe, and I don't believe council should believe, that the best policy is purely an economic question. I think it's a community question. Traffic is definitely an issue on 96th. I've looked at traffic counts. I can't measure speed. I've talked to Bothell Police Officers about speed. But traffic count, I can tell you, at rush hour, 96th acts as a fourth lane on 405. There are 1,000 cars an hour moving south in the morning and north in the afternoon. I'm not a traffic engineer, but that sounds high to me. And like your last presenter said, that's, it makes it pretty hard for people to get in and out. Depending on the kind of usage you add to the front nine, it could get really ugly. And that's the only axis, the only axis when you look at the map, when you look at anything else, is on 96th. I was really surprised, one more thing of what the cons, the kind of language the consultant used, which was really cool trees, beer tourism, resort style, and a certain panache. That didn't strike me personally as a professional research, presentation of research. And Councilmember Agnew, you raised the question of why we saved this land in the first place. We saved this land to be open space. Let's keep it open space. And I hope you keep in mind that hotels and beer gardens are not open parkland, shouldn't be open parkland, and they aren't open parkland everywhere else we find them in the area. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next is Sarah McDonald.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Sarah McDonald. I am part of People for Climate Action. I'm here raising the voices of students from Uta Bothell and Cascadia College tonight. So we're happy to, we're unhappy to know that Bothell has not yet joined the K4C, which is the King County for Climate Action Plan, like many other cities have. And we want to support Bothell in making appropriate climate action commitments. It is important to make, take climate action because global warming is a danger to life as we know it and to future generations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's the end of our signup sheets. Does anybody else want to give a public comment? Go on once, twice? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, is, nothing's been pulled. Is there a motion?
Move to accept the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Councilmember Agnew, second by Deputy Mayor to approve. You said approve the consent agenda, right? Okay, they said approve the agenda. Sorry, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. It passes unanimously. That's a long consent agenda. Okay, we're on to public hearing, AB 19-175. An ordinance establishing new user rates for utility services, water, sanitary sewer, and storm and surface water rates. Officially opening the public hearing. And we're going to have Mr. Benson give us a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Boyd Benson, Public Works. Tonight, I'll be presenting some information about the proposed utility rates for 2020. As soon as I get to full screen, which will be just a second. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. So just for a bit of quick background, I just, this is information that was presented as part of the 2019, 2020 biennial budget presentation. But utilities are fee-supported proprietary funds. These are called enterprise funds. And it's the city's mandate to make sure that revenue and expenses are balanced within those utilities without any outside funding mechanisms from the general fund. These funds have very little interaction with the general fund except for utility taxes, which are taxes against revenue, gross revenues for each of the utilities. And those are the real own main interaction between the general fund and the utility funds. Each utility fund is structured to collect funds without any other fund revenue. And what this helps to guarantee is long-term operational and financial sustainability of the fund irrespective of other outside influences. And the council and the municipal code allow that utility rates may have ended periodically to ensure long-term fiscal viability of the utility programs. This is something that's commonly done at the end of the fourth quarter. We've moved it up a little sooner in this year because of the, the busy council agenda season. So the general approach that we tried to implement is to balance revenues and expenditures over the long term. When you look at your two-year annual budget, you'll see just a short snapshot in time, but we also function, look at revenues and expenses as a function of both the seven-year capital facilities plan and about a five-year budgeting forecast for the budget. Back in 2018, rates were evaluated by staff and a consultant. And at that time, a proposed 3% increase was proposed for sewer, water, and storm utilities. That was also proposed for the 2020 timeframe, but at that time, we only looked at updated ordinance for 2019. So for the proposed sewer rate, sewer, water, storm, water rate increases, staff's recommending a 3% increase across the board. And we're going to have a few slides to present a bit more information to support that proposal. When we look at the long-term budget for each of these utilities, we look at revenues, expenses, and one of the major components of this is to look at the unrestricted beginning fund balance. And this is actually cash on hand to do projects that we need to complete to make sure that we have long-term utility viability. If you could look at this slide right here, what you see is that the portion circled in orange is the estimated beginning fund balance. And this happens to be for water. And what that does is the total fund balance, you'll see the bottom line. We also have restricted funds. Those are circled in red. These are set asides that are mandated by municipal code to make sure that we can continue operating should we run low on reserves or other funds. So you'll see a capital emergency reserve and operator reserve and restricted funds for debt service. And then what's circled in green is the unrestricted beginning fund balance. This is important because you can see that as time goes on from 2012 through our forecasted beginning fund balance, it fluctuates quite a bit. So once again, we think of this as the cash on hand to do projects. In times where we're doing quite a few projects, let's say back in 2012, you may see a low cash beginning fund balance. And at times where we have not done as many funds or projects, but we're accumulating funds to do more projects, like in 2018, you'll see a relatively high beginning fund balance. And like I said, we forecast out at least five years to account for plans within the capital facilities plan. And you can see in this fund that by 2023, we see quite a reduction in the beginning fund balance. And this information and others helps us understand what type of rate changes to propose. So once again, just, this is just a general overview and we're using water as an example. But for revenues, we see approximately 12 million for the 2019, 2020 budget. The majority of those are user fees. Those are the bi-monthly or the every-of-the-month fees collected from users. We also have facility charges. Those are charges that are applied to new development to buy into the system, permits and rents, and fire protection tax. And for that period, it was approximately 12 million. Now we look at the expenditures, which are 13 million. So once again, in this time period, the expenditures exceed the revenue. And the majority of that is for water purchase. And that's about 27%. So that's our direct charge to SPU to purchase water for our system. The next major is our projects, capital projects and other projects to make sure that our system continues to be robust. And then as you see, as we go through there, there's also salaries and benefits, inter-funds and other utility tax and inter-fund transfers. So for the water utility, you can see at the map in the lower right, our service area is located within the King County portion of the city. It's circled in yellow. And the goal of this utility is to provide safe, reliable, and appealing water delivered in sufficient quantities and pressure. And that's important to the city so we can maintain flow and provide good potable water for our citizens. This accounts for daily operation of quite a, quite a few miles of water main and hydrants. So for considerations for the 2020 rate, or rate proposal, our water purchase increase between 2019 and 2020 will increase at 5.8%. Actually varies from 5.7 to 5.9. And that's part of our SPU cost and contract. The estimated cost of living increase is about 1.7%. So we see a pretty robust increase in direct costs to utility. Staff is recommending a 3% rate increase to account for the majority of those increases. And once again, we're looking at these increases over a larger stretch in time so we can try to reduce any increases in magnitude so we don't see large fluctuations in rates. And that's the goal of this utility. We always try to provide comparisons with other cities so we can let you understand what other cities are doing to address increases in costs. And not many of those studies are out yet. We're relatively early in the season. But for comparisons of light-sized or slightly larger system, Redmond, Linwood, and Kirkland are all between the 2% and 4% increase. For the city sewer utility, once again, that's the service area within the King County portion of the city. Provide reliable sanitary and efficient wastewater collection and conveyance. Our sewage is treated through King County, conveyed and treated through King County. But the city still maintains about 70 miles of main and four lift stations. So for considerations for rates for 2020, we looked at sewer treatment increases. Now, we provided an average share of 2%. The actual increases vary from anywhere between zero, which is, happens to be 2020, up to 2.6% for 2021 through 2023, and a whopping 5 point, I think it was 6% for 2018 to 19. So we've tried to smooth this increase out over time as opposed to have widely fluctuating rates. And then once again, the cost of living increase of approximately 1.7%. And we have recommended a rate increase of 3%, which is what was proposed last year, both for 2019 and 2020, as I mentioned before. Once again, for comparisons, unfortunately, some of these photos, they're quite exciting to us, but the yellow circle there shows infiltration, quite a bit of groundwater and surface water flowing in the sewer, but you can't see it here. We'll do better next year on that. But Redmond, Linwood, and Kirkland, anywhere from 3, 3.85 to 7.45% sewer rate increases. And a lot of that is for treatment costs. Storm and surface water utility. The surface area for this is the entire city limits. Quite a bit of this work is responding to NPDES, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System requirements. And that's planning, developing, and maintaining a comprehensive stormwater utility program. Day-to-day operations, this is the folks that take care of the catch basins, the storm pipes, and the water quality and detention facilities within the city of Bothell. Rate considerations for 2020, cost of living increase of 1.7%. There are increased NPDS requirements with the new 2019 permit. And these are over the next two to five years. And they include additional evaluations of watershed-based planning, additional mapping and investigation of outfalls, and quite a few other regulatory requirements. So we don't have a percent increase or, or burden from those activities, but it is quite a bit of work. And the recommended consumer rate increase for this utility is 3%. Comparison with other cities, Redmond is staying at zero. And Linwood and Kirkland are in the 2% to 4%. We did look at our rates compared to 63 other cities in Puget Sound. This is a study that was completed for 2019 rates. And Bothell's pretty much in the middle. I pulled out two outliers, one that was like $3 and the other one was $60 for a monthly bill, but anywhere from $8.50 to $31. And we're right smack damn in the middle at about $14. So summary, where staff is recommending consideration of 2020 rates with an increase of 3% across the board for water, sewer, and stormwater. We provided a table in the agenda bill and up on the screen. And what this does is for the average utility user, and when I say average, it's kind of hard to quantify, but we look at a single-family residence with the average consumption for winter water. And the difference is about $43 a year. If these rates are approved, they'd be effective January 1st. And it would first start to appeal up here in the every-of-the-month water and sewer bills and then the stormwater bills that are sent out through King County and Snohomish County at the winter and fall timeframe. Staff is preparing to look at a 2020 rate evaluation. This is something that was included in the 2019, 2020 budget. And that work is in the scoping phase, but we'll have additional information for council to consider in 2020. And that's what I have to present this evening.
Is there any questions from council? We need to go to public comment too, but Councilmember McAuliffe?
No, I'm looking at your last statement, which was the study for 2020, correct?
Correct.
But I thought I heard earlier that this increase, that 3% increase would be over a few years. Is that correct? I mean, it would be steady for a few more years.
No. To be more clear on that, when we looked at rates in 2018, we did a pretty strong evaluation in November 2018. And at that time, to look at the fiscal, to balance revenues expenditures over the next seven years through 2025, we proposed a rate increase of 3% for 2018 to 2019. We also proposed it for 2019, 2020. The ordinance only included the 2019, 2019 increase. What I was discussing earlier though is we try to smooth out the changes in purchase costs for water or treatment costs for sewers. So that's maybe, is that what you're asking?
Yes. So I think what I am asking, and I think you are clearly saying it, is that there will be a steady and the 3% increase is only for 2020. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I have it. Thank you.
Any other questions? There's nobody on the signup sheet, so does anybody want to give a public comment? We're good? All right, Councilmember Zornz?
Comments? Couple of things. It seems like the stormwater adjustment that we're talking, rate increase that we're talking about is probably the biggest discrepancy, biggest change. Is, is, is that going to give us the potential for a buffer for managing stormwater down the road? If, or is it going, or is it going to be, is our stormwater cost going to be just cutting even by bumping up 3%?
That's a very good question. And the information that we presented for the budget, which we're not presenting tonight, shows the capital program projects listed out through 2025. And those vary year by year. So when we look at the 3%, we're really not comparing So, when we look at the 3%, we're really not comparing it to a direct 1.7% increase. We're looking at the cost that we foresee down the future. So, does it provide a buffer? It provides more of a buffer than 1.7%, but it really provides more of a steady funding, a more steady, consistent funding source over the next few years.
Okay. Because managing stormwater is really important since we're on the edge of Puget Sound. So, I appreciate that. I had the opportunity to go through the Brightwater Lift Station with Councilmember Olson and new respect for managing sewage and all that goes into it. The one, the one, oh, and then also along the lines of sewage, is shout-out for the Insta-Pipe people who are giving new life to a very decrepit, you said, 70 miles of sewer main that the city has to maintain. Not them specifically, but that's the responsibility. And I think our neighborhoods towards the end of that project and watching what those folks are doing and breathing new life to our, you know, our ancient old sewer pipes, everyone should be grateful for that technology and the capable staff that are, that are making that happen. So, props to that whole process of who you brought in and addressing it. The one, the one other comment is, when I think about water, it's probably the only product that we're purchasing, right? And I, and I know Sno, I keep bringing this up, and y'all are going to be just like tired of hearing me, hearing me talk about this. I know Snohomish County, they're going through a growth boom, and for us to go to Alderwood Water and say, hey, could we have some of that, that water? But at some point, if there is ever to do, an opportunity for our city to do some competitive product purchasing, to go from, move from SPU to Alderwood, I would back you up on that. That's my only comment and question.
Can I respond to one of your comments?
Oh, sure, sure.
So, just real quick, with the, the pipe project you're discussing, it's cure-and-place pipe, which is really neat. So, if you have an old piece of decrepit pipe, the bottom could be missing, the joints could be messed up. You can cut the roots out and clean it. You can actually pull in a resin impregnated sock into the pipe from one manhole to the other. You inflate it, basically, so it conforms to the sides of the pipe, and you run a UV curing light through the pipe, and it has a camera on it as well. And it builds a pipe liner that is greater in strength than the original pipe. And what's nice about that is if we don't have to come and rip up a neighborhood and a roadway, which costs a lot of money and causes a lot of congestion and construction-related issues, this is something we look at. So, those are the type of opportunities that we're looking for, and I'm glad you appreciate that.
I'm grateful for it. We got to watch them run the pipe down there and see what it looked like on the inside before, you know, it started getting used. And it's, it's just like, it looks great, and I, you know, I won't live long enough to see it, it go through its whole lifespan, but I'm very grateful for that the people coming down the road from me are going to have pipes that have, that have a nice, long life to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. It was exciting to see your, your excitement for running that. My question is, you mentioned Kirkland had a pretty significant increase. Is that, did I see that correctly?
Yeah, so I can back up to that slide. And what I'll say is, this is disclaimer. All this information, we've only been able to glean off the websites from proposed agendas and the rest. And I'll tell you right now, Kirkland was in an older document, so this may have changed. Linwood and Redmond, I'm pretty confident on. Kirkland, not so much. But anyway, please ask your question.
So, what could potentially drive such a drastic increase? Is it old infrastructure that we're maintaining? What drives that, that cost?
I can't speak for Kirkland itself, but where you could potentially see something similar in Bothell, which we hope not, because we do get planning, is if you have deferred maintenance. If you have deferred programs that you haven't implemented or capital projects that you have not saved for, that's when you see low rates because you're deferring maintenance or projects. And then, when you get to those projects, you increase rates. The approach that the Public Works Department takes in financing the rest through the process that I've worked on here is to forecast far enough out so we don't see big bumps. We don't see 0%, 0%, 0%, 8% increase in rates. But that's, that's the approach here, which I think is, is good stewardship for the utilities.
Yeah, it'd be similar to like roads and just patching and patching and patching, and then all of a sudden, you've got a major issue that you've got to take care of. So, when we do this planning, are we planning infrastructure that's got to be replaced far enough out?
That's a great question. So, what's not in this presentation, but it's good information now, is when we look at these utilities, we plan for a 20-year lifespan. So, when you saw the sewer comprehensive plan last year, we're updating the water comprehensive plan. We're looking at not only the 20-year growth and what improvements need to be taken care of, so developments accommodated and to make sure that development pays for their fair share with connection charges. We're also looking at replacement and depreciation, and those are built into that as well for our annual replacement program. And now, I just got off track. But we're looking at a long time range with respect to that, and that influences the costs that we project out over the 20-year. It then influences the seven-year capital facilities program for the projects we want to do, gets down to the two-year budget, and then it comes down to annual rate increases if required. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and I think more beyond that was, I think it led into where you answered the question I was going to ask about development pays for development, which is a one-time funding source. It's not an ongoing funding source. So, once that infrastructure is installed one time for the growth, then it's, we have to provide the service long-term. And so, we need to be long-term planning. Is that, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you for your presentation.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
The recommended action.
Moved by Councilmember McNeil, second by the Deputy Mayor to adopt the proposed ordinance establishing new user rates for utility services, water, sanitary sewer, and storm and surface water, and revise and clarify the application and billing process for water and sewer utilities. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. And it passes unanimously. We are moving right along on to contracts. AB 19-176, construction contract for the non-motorized bridge at the Park at Bothell Landing. And we have Lauren Freest, is that right?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Yes, my name is Lauren Freest. I'm a capital project engineer in the Public Works Department. I'm here to present staff's recommendation that the city council authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with Road Construction Northwest for the construction of the non-motorized bridge at the Park at Bothell Landing. The existing bridge has reached the end of its design life and needs to be replaced. This project will preserve a vital trail connection as well as remove an ADA obstruction from the trail system. Total project cost is $2.7 million, of which $2.3 million is funded by grant sources, specifically PSRC's Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Grant and the Recreation and Conservation Office's Trails Grant. Contract time for this project is 150 working days spanning from December 2019 to fall 2020. During that time, trail users and community members can expect a trail closure as well as a four-week period where the crossing itself is closed. We will be providing detour signage and noticing during that time, before and during. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there any questions? Councilmember Zornz.
So, I'm cheating because I'm actually bringing another context in here as a point of comparison, because I know that at some point, the community needs to be thinking about bridge replacements for Wayne, the Wayne Course, Golf Course Park, the Wayne Park. And one of the bridges, as I understand, is 100, is spanning 140 feet. This bridge is spanning how many feet? About?
About there, 160?
Is it 160? No, I thought it was about 140, 140 or 100?
It's 130.
130? 130. So, it's a short, it's a shorter bridge. And just as a, as a, I'm asking you for the total cost on this as a reference point as the community starts to think about what bridges, foot-passenger bridges cost. What is the sum total on this bridge?
For the construction?
Right.
Total construction contract?
Yep.
One, excuse me, I don't want to tell you the wrong number.
It's in our packet. It's $1,767,030.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. And it's a good reference point for future. Or the construction cost, the design, that doesn't even include design. So, yes. So, thank you. I just, I just wanted to clarify that so that we can know what, you know? This is a, a close-in timeframe that we have to think about other foot-passenger bridges, and so, this is good to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Ragnew.
I just have a question. It talks about $400,000 in local funds.
Yes.
And where's that coming from?
I'd like to defer to finance. Chris, are you available?
Or? It's a real estate excise tax, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor.
So, how long have we been planning this project?
2015, I believe.
So, I just wanted to point out when people talk about how long government takes to do things, it's because it takes that long to patchwork all the money together to make it happen. And the other comment I wanted to make is I'm really, really excited to have, to see the plan because the bridge will no longer empty out straight into the Burke-Gilman, which is a huge safety hazard. Every time I come off of that bridge, I'm thinking I'm going to get hit by bikes going to and fro. So, I think it will really greatly improve the utility of the park, so thank you.
All right, is there a motion? Oh, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember McNeil, my bad.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about the, the funding, the grants, and maybe ask a question. You said it was, is it PSRC? The majority of those grants came from?
Pretty half and half, 1.2 from PSRC, and then 1.1 from the Recreation and Conservation Office.
Okay. And it seems, and if I, if memory serves, the grant process, we apply for those grants. We have, does somebody within the city apply for those grants? Or how do we, how do we get, how do we obtain those grants?
I must admit, I'm brought on once we decide which grant to apply for.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jason Torre, supervising engineer for the, one of the capital groups. So, yeah, our grant application process is a very lengthy process. It starts years before we get to this stage, and we start by applying for grants years in advance. And so, yes, staff puts together the grant applications and works with the community to figure out, identify projects that will be both competitive and meet our needs as a community.
And this particular project, it seems like it ranked pretty high. What was the factor between that ranking high like that?
Well, as Lauren stated, it's a, it's a critical transportation infrastructure piece for the trail network connecting downtown with the regional trail system, as well as, you know, it wasn't meeting ADA compliance, it was ending its useful life, as well as it had some other deficiencies as well. So, it's structurally deficient, as well as the ADA. We had the surface of it as well as the grades. And as Deputy Mayor pointed out, also, the intersection with the Burke-Gilman Trail was not the safest and provided some conflicts there, produced some conflicts there.
Okay. And then, lastly, it was 2.7, I think, was the overall cost, of which we received 2.3 million in grants. And then, the construction cost is 1.767. I think the mayor alluded to that, that price. So, to me, it seems like a pretty big win for our community to bring that much grant money back into our community to help pay for that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion? Deputy Mayor.
I recommend we authorize the city manager to enter into a construction contract with Road Construction Northwest, Inc., in the amount of $1,767,030 for the construction of the non-motorized bridge at the Park at Bothell Landing project in substantially the same form as presented.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember McNeil. Let's read it again. Authorize the city manager to enter into the construction contract with Road Construction Northwest, Incorporated, in the amount of $1,767,030 for the, I love the $30 on there, for the construction of the non-motorized bridge at Park of Bothell Landing project in substantially the same form as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Councilmember McAuliffe, did you not want to vote, or are you voting? Okay. Are you in the affirmative? Okay, passes unanimously. Moving on to, you'd last, agenda item. Oh, we do? There's another page. Bummer. Okay. Ordinance resolutions, AB 19-177, Safe and Secure Bothell Implementation Bond Ordinance and Bond and Levy Budget Amendment Ordinance. Mr. Bothwell.
All right. So, as you're aware, Safe and Secure Bothell programs, including Fire Station Reconstruction, are progressing on schedule. Spending is also on schedule and is consistent with the spending plan that was presented to the council and to voters. Tonight, I have two ordinances for you that are best characterized as housekeeping. They're required to provide resources to continue with the progress on Safe and Secure So, the first item we're asking you to approve is a bond ordinance. This ordinance authorizes the sale of voter-approved bonds to fund the reconstruction of Fire Stations 42 and 45. Some of the details of the bonds are as follows. They're voter-approved. The maximum bond value is $35.5 million. We're going to do it in two bond sales. The first one will be by the end of this year, and that'll be for $25.5 million. We're going to repay bondholders over a 20-year period, and those payments will come from excess property tax levy that was also voter-approved. So, approval of this ordinance will allow us to move forward with the bond sale and provide funding for the Fire Station Reconstruction. Additionally, in a related side note, in anticipation of the bond sale, we went through the process to get rerated by Moody's, which is one of the big ratings agencies. And it's a lengthy process where we tell them a lot about the city and what's going on. They finally issued us a rating on Friday, and they've upgraded us from AA2 to AA1, which means that the debt, issuing these bonds is going to cost the city less than we had thought it would. So, that's a great development. The second item is an ordinance to amend the 2019-2020 budget to include Safe and Secure Bothell. Due to the timing of voter approval of Safe and Secure relative to the timing of budget adoption, a budget was not adopted for Safe and Secure programs. This was planned all along, but it's time to adopt a budget for those programs. So, we're asking you to adopt a budget for Public Safety Levy Fund, the Fire Station Bond Fund, the Fire Station Construction and Acquisition Fund. An approval of this ordinance will provide spending and hiring authority for Safe and Secure Bothell programs. And the budget amendment is consistent with the spending and hiring plans that were presented to council and to voters. And just like the bond ordinance, this is a housekeeping item. So, the recommendation is to approve the bond ordinance and the budget amendment, providing resources to continue implementation of Safe and Secure Bothell. Happy to take any questions.
Why, you just rolled that right over the Moody's rating increase. I thought I'd just take a quick second and highlight that. That's a huge deal. I was here, actually, when our Moody's ratings was decreased. I was further here when I found out that our operating reserves was under $1 million. I think it was down to like $300,000, and the council wasn't aware of it. So, this is a huge shift in a matter of just a couple of years, and I, it isn't just the council at all, this, the staff as well, and the community passing bonds to support the city services that we provide. So, as a group, we did awesome, because having a Moody's rating go back up like that and to have that kind of vote of confidence, I would say, from the investment. and to have that kind of vote of confidence, I would say, from the investment side of the world, I think is a really big, a big moment for us. And I'm really proud of you guys and everything that we've done as a group together to make that happen, so. Well done, and because Mr. Bothell is the Finance Director also, is why. The Moody's rating is what it is. So is there any questions? Not of me. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I was, I actually was going to ask if you could talk a little bit about their justification for upgrade.
Yeah, so during the rerating process, you have an opportunity to tell Bothell's story. So a few things that the analysts seemed to really latch on to was the success of the downtown redevelopment. There's a lot of excitement around that. It's bringing in additional revenue through sales tax and property taxes. Another one was the opportunity, in the near term, to unload a couple of the downtown properties, which will present an opportunity to restore some of the fund balance that was spent on the redevelopment. Our close prox, just the location, the close proximity to the major employment centers in Bellevue and Seattle, we highlighted that with them, and they seemed to like that. The fact that we have some developable land, you know, as you leave those major employment centers and head north, we're kind of the first stop where there's major developable land. So we think the development activity is going to continue. Those kinds of factors, it's just the qual, great quality of life, good schools. We emphasize all this, all the stuff that makes Bothell great, and they seem to like it. The rebounding of the fund balances, so they've been, you know, coming back up as some of the properties have sold. That was a positive, so, a number of things. And they'll issue, so they issued a press release to say that they're upgrading us, but they'll issue in the next couple of days a more robust report where they'll describe all those factors. The things that are in the summary, though, were the opportunity to sell the properties, the success of downtown redevelopment, and just a willingness by the governing body and the city government to be good financial stewards.
Yeah, I think I read the levies were helpful, too. Am I right? Did that come up?
The...
Like having passed the levies to Prop of Public Safety and whatnot.
Yeah, there, there probably was a note about that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo and tag on to, to the mayor's comments. I know it's been a lot of work and budget conversations, financial conversations are very difficult to have. I know we have another budget cycle coming up that we're going to have to start working on. But doing these types of things and getting that rating, making that rating better, actually helps. We didn't have to leave it as it was and then cost the taxpayers more money. We're able to, to get into a better financial situation. So it doesn't just help for those, but it helps across the board. So I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who worked so hard on making this happen.
All right, any other questions? Motion?
Move the recommended action. I'm not going to bother reading it anymore, he just reads it again anyway.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Ragnew, and I don't have it in front of me, of course. There we go. Approved the ordinance authorizing the sale and delivery of bonds not to exceed $35,500,000 for fire station reconstruction, and ordinance amending the 2019-2020 budget to recognize and authorize Safe and Secure Bothell program revenues and expenditures. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. And that passes unanimously. We're moving right along. All right, discussion items and updates, AB 19-178, e-scooter pilot program. And we have Ms. Ash.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. So I am here to give you an update about the 90-day pilot program that you approved and launched this past July. The pilot program ends this Thursday on the 19th, I believe the date is. So I want to give you an update about the communications, the feedback that we got. Also, too, I want to let you know that I looked at this through the lens of a, the city and how they behaved as a business. So I had very specific conversations with the Public Works Department about not picking up scooters if they found them on the streets. We agreed that the only time that they would, our staff would go out and remove scooters if they were obstructing anything was if they were in, in someplace that was environmentally sensitive. I also, too, asked the police department and the fire department to contact me if there was any injuries reported while riding scooters. I want, again, I wanted to see how the company responded to, as a business, to some of the challenges that other communities have been going through, like scooters in the river, et cetera. So with that, on the, we had 100 scooters launch on July 19th. And the city's intern, communications intern, did a fabulous job of launching the program. He did Facebook, he also did a lot of social media. And as a result, we had two TV stations out here who reported on the launch of e-scooters in Bothell. We also, too, posted on Facebook, and on Facebook, I see in your packet, we had about 50-plus responses, a lot of conversation. And a lot of it, the majority of the Facebook conversation was what I would define as trolling. There was only five emphatic no's that this was a bad idea, and some positive, also to some folks who thought it was positive. We received six, I received, during this report, I received six emails from folks who had complaints. And since this report was written, I received two more com, two more complaints. The complaints were major, were mostly about noise. People having too much fun at after-hours riding the scooters. And I, it's, it's a challenge because the scooters aren't making the noise, the people are making the noise. So should we move forward with this program? I've talked to Lime Scooter, and what they've agreed is that they could just shut the scooters down during the same time that we have our noise ordinances, which I believe is between 11:00 and 6:00 a.m., approximately. Also, too, within the first two weeks of having scooters here, we had some graffiti on our front, on our plaza here, rather creative folks using their time once again at 1:00 a.m. And Lime was very, very responsive, they got right on it. They paid approximately between $2,000 and $4,000 to have our plaza power washed. They also, too, put down, put up a fence around the city, City Hall so that once you ride a scooter on our plaza, it automatically slows down to seven miles per hour. So where's my... Oh, sorry. I need adult supervision. Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. So how's it go up on the screen? Thank you. So this is a report, we've received monthly reports from Lime, and what they did is they reported the number of rides as well as the, the averages on how long the rides were and how far they went on, on average. And also, too, they reported out with, with regards to the amount of carbon saved. That's, you know, not going into the air because of these rides. Those were assumptions, the part with regards to the environmental comments are assumptions that these people would not, were, wouldn't, were not driving their cars, but they were riding scooters. One report, I do want to say that one experience that I had with Lime is that they consistently report that they have not received any complaints. And I will say that from experience, it's very, very difficult to go on to Lime's website and make a complaint. They don't make it easy. So we, like I said, we are coming up on the end of our 90-day pilot program, and I'm here to ask you whether or not you want to consider making this a permanent program. Should you consider making this a permanent program, I would like to ask you for 100-day, 180-day extension on this pilot program because we're going to have to go in and create ordinances and permitting processes, also figure out how we're going to manage this program. Because when we created it, we cobbled it together using public right-of-way permit fees, and we borrowed from bicycle ordinances, and I managed it. And I'm not exactly sure I'm the right person to be managing this program. So we need, these are things we need to figure out and consider. So with that, I think that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation as well. My question would be, if we do this 180-day extension, will they increase the number of scooters that are launched? So you said 100 were launched in July of 2019. Will that number increase?
So that's one of the things that I would like to explore, is what is the city's capacity for more scooters? If there is an opportunity, or if we're just filled up. This pilot program only included downtown, the downtown redevelopment area. It did not include any of our business parks. So if we were to do a 180-day extension, I would like to have conversations with our business parks to see if they're willing to collaborate with us in sound transit and community transit on setting up, or launching Lime scooters at the transit stations for riding into the park to cover that last mile.
So I think I just wanted to be sure that during the 180 days, we're still going, while we write some policy?
Right.
We're still going to have only 100 launched?
Yes.
And then, because I think as I'm looking through your report here, there are policies that we have to look at, such as helmets, such as riding on the city streets, particularly in downtown area. I've heard some of the concerns that people trying to walk in scooters on the sidewalks.
I, I think that's a valid point, the, because our ordinances are such that Washington State requires helmets, King County does, but Snohomish County doesn't. So we would need to create our own policies.
I appreciate that, thank you for your work.
Any other questions, Councilmembers Ordens?
When it comes to cobbling things together, you're genius. So thank you for what, what you've done and thinking about how to control all the variables in as much as you can control them. I happened to run across a University of Washington student who was on our hill visiting somebody, parked the scooter, and asked them about, you know, from a student perspective, about the scooter. And his comment was, "This saves me so much because I can't get in-and-out privileges in the parking, but I can take the scooter, buzz downtown, buzz back, go visit friends." So I know as a student, he loved having those there. But I also liked the 180 days, especially as finessing the, the fine points as much as possible. Scooters on Main Street can't, they, they're not supposed to be on the sidewalks, right?
That's correct.
From Main Street, but, but the street itself isn't, isn't desirable because it's a pretty narrow street as people are trying to park and finesse through. So I'm going to leave it to staff who can problem-solve it. I, I don't know, on the sidewalks, could we put a geofence on that that would slow people down to, on Main Street, to seven miles now? I, I don't know what the answer is. But, but I would be in support of going another 180 days if it doesn't, you know, if that's something staff is willing to take on in working the bugs out of the system.
Councilmember Ragnew?
I think 180 days would be fine. I think we also need to continue to find out from police and fire if there have been any accidents related to this. This seems to be more of a seasonal event, so with the weather coming on, I'm just wondering if the college students are not going to pick up the pace and, and, and pick that up. It, it's going to be interesting to, to see the numbers that we get at the end of this 180 days.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. I had a conversation with a gentleman who works in Canyon Park, and he actually was hoping that we would have some up there at the park and ride so that he could do the last mile. And so it sounded like we're not going to expand the number, but I, I would encourage us to actually expand up into Canyon Park and allow that to happen and see how successful that is because we hear all the time about last mile, first and last mile, and that park and ride is close, but not extremely close, to all the businesses there. So I think there's potential for a lot of usage.
If I can share with you some of the challenges of, of that, because it has actually been recommended in the reports by the consultants who are working on Canyon Park, that that might be a solution. The challenge is, is that those, those are all privately-owned parks, that infrastructure is not ours. Initial conversations, they're concerned about liability, but I think that we can show them that we have, you know, the indemnity agreement and the insurance that they carry. We did have a conversation with one part, business park this afternoon who thought it was a great idea. So the, the challenge is, is that, that it's private property, and we have to get the business association's buy-in.
I understand, I just thought I'd relay that, that message from a constituent. And I'm, I'm in favor of continuing for 180 days, so, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I was encouraged by the comments from the University of Washington, how they saw a problem, and they actually put the fencing up or slowed them, slowed them down. I was wondering, have we heard anything about the, the scooters actually being out in neighborhoods further out, or is there a distance away from the downtown area? Because I'm, I'm actually noticing scooters over by Simon's Road, as far away as Simon's.
This map shows you the route that the scooters have been taking and the density of where the, where the rides are. And when the Lime consultant, or saw this, he was a little dismayed. He says, "They're not supposed to be riding this far out." So people are actually using these to ride not only in the neighborhoods, but ride all the way into Seattle. So yes, they are showing up in neighborhoods, I've been noticing them in neighborhoods. The, the, I think the, the real question from my point of view is, are they being picked up, are they being, are, are they being abandoned?
Yeah, and that's, that was part of my, my question as well. So they, they're dying out in those neighborhoods, they're not, you know, batteries are dead, and then who's, who's coming in, picking them up?
Right, I have not gotten any feedback of clutter, so I don't know how to respond to that, but we'll research it.
Okay. And then the, the geofencing, does that work anywhere? Are they able to?
Yes.
Okay, so they, they can, they can set that up?
Yes, they'll, like I said, they'll shut the scooters down all night long for the city of Bothell, if that's what we request. And then, like, they put up a geofence around City Hall, so.
Okay, and then last question I had was, is there a way to tell where people are from that are riding?
I don't know that answer, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Just because there's some confusion, the, the map that's up on the display there, that's actually the city of Redmond and city of Redmond data. So you...
I don't know why you're over there laughing at me.
But the, the one in our packet is actually the city of Bothell, so.
I apologize.
That's okay, I imagine you didn't probably produce that map.
I didn't produce a map, but I should have been paying attention.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Do you, you want to go another round?
No, no, I just have one small comment as to what...
All right, go on.
Councilwoman McNeil said. So what I do know is that early in the morning, a truck goes around, picks up all of the scooters, and the people who do this are paid. And so it's a good young person's employment job.
Sounds like you got the direction, 180 days, sound good, no restrictions.
I have a question, would you like to receive monthly reports, or do you want to wait until the end of the 180 days?
Not until 2020, for sure. All right, moving on. How about quarterly? Quarterly sound good, and you don't want to hear about this once a month, do you?
I'm not, I'm, I'm, just send you reports, I don't want to come and talk to you.
Oh, send them all you want, that sounds great.
Thank you.
Yeah, not of Redmond, though, we'd like the Bothell stats, please. All right, now, no joke, last item on our agenda, AB 19-179, Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update, with Mr. Blackman.
Good evening.
Good evening. Where is mine? Uh-oh. Can you help me find mine? Oh, there it is. Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. This is a status update briefing on the Canyon Park Subarea Plan that we're currently working on right now. And I just kind of want to go quickly a little bit on the history. We've already been through Phase 1, which was the vision process. We did that in 2017, 2018. We're now in Phase 2 and completing Phase 2. And Phase 2 is basically laying the groundwork for what we want to do here in the next phase. And these are a bunch of completed tasks. We've got a lot of technical information here that we've been gathering, a lot of things about, a lot of public outreach. We're really trying to get some folks to get some input to us. We're doing a lot of existing conditions analysis, land use alternatives, capacity analysis, Puget Sound Regional Council Regional Growth Center Framework Criteria. That is our real charge to make sure we comply with those. Scoping environmental impacts, a lot of transportation modeling. And we have convened an interagency transportation advisory committee, which is a group of regional agencies and partners that we have used. We include the Washington State Department of Ecology, Snohomish County, Sound Transit, Community Transit, and of course, our own local City of Bothell Transportation Experts. So a lot of work is going into, say, the lay of the groundwork. So some people say, "Well, how come you're taking so much time to do this?" There's a lot of complexity in Canyon Park. This is a really interesting area for us to be investigating. We've also been doing a lot of public outreach. In fact, we've been having a lot of these inter, kind of discussions with different businesses and property owners. It takes a little bit of time to do that, but it's very valuable that we do that. We need to understand the transportation system out here. That is really key. We have been spending a lot of time with our consultant, Farr and Pierce, and our, the Public Works Department to really get a feel for what's happening out there in the transportation system. The other one is we want to understand what the transportation improvements that are planned for the area do for the transportation movement within this area. And of course, we certainly have the Sound Transit Bus Base Facility. And of course, again, the Puget Sound Regional Council Framework Criteria is really important that we understand those as well as apply them correctly. One of the things that I want to identify to the council, and this is a couple of maps that I think I've shown you before. But to the left is the 2014 Level of Service Conditions. And this is basically identifying how the system was operating. And you see different letters. Basically, it's the A to F criteria for transportation projects. And you can see that the corridor, which is the kind of the funny shaped D, Es and Cs, the larger Es, that's a corridor level of service. There's individual intersection level services as well. So you can, oh, okay. So you can see that even in 2014, we were starting to get some intersections operating at F. In 2043, underneath what we call a no-action level of service, that in status quo, we don't do anything. We just let the comprehensive plan be developed as it is and our zoning as it is. And we still get to a very interesting situation here with the level of services increasing tremendously. And you'll see that we've also identified that in the 2043, we are assuming a lot of the projects have been done and we're still getting to these high levels of services. You can see the corridor goes to an E, from a D to an E. You can see quite a few of the intersections go to F functions as well as a lot of increase in the number of vehicles on those trips. That's partly the background growth that's happening. That's also part of some of the planned growth that'll occur here. So we know we have a challenge to overcome in this transportation system. But that's what we do. And I also want to show you this slide. This slide essentially shows the main corridor. This about 101.4-mile section of the SR 527 of the Bothell River Highway is going to be a real challenge. And you can see some of the circles, which are some four key intersections that we're going to have to work through. The Canyon Park Regional Growth Center really currently only has three ways to get out of there. And those are at 214th, 220th, and down here at 29th Avenue on 228th Street. So that's one of the things we're going to have to work on, figuring out how we can get that level of employment. And there's a lot of people out there right now. We're going to have more as we go in through the years into our street system, not just 405 and 527, but 524, which is Maltby Road, as well as 9th Avenue, 228th Street. There's a bunch of projects that we will have to start looking at from that standpoint. So this is going to be one of the main focuses we have on, in this effort. One of the things I wanted to identify was that we're, of course, aware of the express toll lane, ETL, on and off ramps that are coming from the new express toll lanes that the Washington State Department of Ecology is, I'm sorry, Washington State Department of Transportation is constructing. And, you know, we know about the north leg, which is going directly into the park. But there's also in the Interstate 405 Master Plan, a south leg that basically would take that to 228th Street. That is the next big project that may help us get some of these projects, some of these vehicles and pedestrians and buses out of the Canyon Park area. So that's a future thing that we're going to want to look and study and understand. Phase 3, and thank you very much for authorizing that tonight because this is where this all comes together. And we're going to do a whole bunch of projects. And that includes a lot of public engagement. Public engagement is going to be a real key factor as we go through here because we have residents, we have businesses, we have employers, we have property owners that we really want to spend a lot of time on. We've been working with Becky Urange on coming up with a, I guess you'd call it kind of a public outreach plan and how we're going to do that. And we're prepared to spend a lot more time. We've already spent a lot of time. We want to spend more time on that. We're going to be issuing a draft environmental impact statement about the end of November. That's the first big step. And it's a big document that talks about all of the different elements of the environment that we want to protect. Ranging from transportation, which is certainly a natural thing we'll do, as well as some of our critical areas, and social justice. There's a lot of things we put into this report. It's going to be huge. You're going to love it. There's also going to be discussed on a preferred alternative. We've already identified some bookend alternatives for us to look at in the EIS. But while what we do is we take all that information and we say, okay, what is our preferred alternative? What should we have in this area? What should be the size of the Regional Growth Center? How many employees should be anticipated? How many residents should we anticipate? What should they look at? And so that's going to be a really key factor. We're going to have a lot of fun working on that here in the next coming months. That will culminate in the issuance of a final environmental impact statement. Now remember, these are all planned action environmental impact statements, which basically identify that within the realm of the final EIS that is identified, if a development comes in and they're within that scope in this identified realm that we anticipated, we don't have to go through additional environmental review for each project. Very similar to what we did for downtown. Very, very good tool for us to use in this area. We're also going to do an update to the Subarea Plan. That's basically the framework document that we will do, just like any other Subarea Plan. And finally, Subarea Regulations. Those are the regulations that, okay, what the buildings will look at, how tall they will be, what kind of landscaping we'll install. All those kind of factors will be coming up in the Subarea Regulations. So Phase 3, the next eight months, is going to be pretty exciting and pretty intense because we're going to have a lot of policy discussion on how we do things and how we would like to do that. And it's going to be pretty exciting. So as far as the schedule goes, in the next three months, in 2019, we're going to really focus a lot on public engagement because now we have some information we can really share. Previously, we're just asking general input. Now we're going to say, hey, what about this impact? What should we, how should we address this? And we're going to really get into that. We want to complete our transportation analysis. One of the things that the Interagency Transportation Group identified, they gave us a whole bunch of ideas. And that just takes some time to kind of go through those and parcel them. Okay, well, no, that doesn't make any sense. Well, maybe this one does. And so you kind of take a little bit of time to look on those things. Certainly issuance of the draft environmental impact statement. That's going to be around the end of November. That'll be the real first big document we issue out to the public. And finally, we're going to work really hard on identifying a preferred alternative. We're going to have study sessions with the Planning Commission and the City Council here in the next few months, and we're going to be actually working on that aspect of it. In 2020, in the first quarter, we're again, continuing with our public engagement. We're going to do a lot of analysis of the preferred alternative. We're going to get into that final impact, final environmental impact statement. That's a big document to be issued. And that's basically what we will believe we want to see in Canyon Park. And of course, certainly, we're going to do the Subarea Plan policies and land use regulations. And that'll continue through April, May, and June and July when we hope to have this all wrapped up. So you can see, we're going to be having a great time here in the next several months. But it's really fascinating. This area is just, it's just so interesting to work on that I think that the council is going to really enjoy that as well. So anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Bruce. Your enthusiasm is infectious. So did I hear correctly that by the end of November, or is it December, we would have some sort of idea on how or alternatives for providing the 45 activity units per acre?
You will. Now remember, these are bookends. It's not necessarily the one we will want to do.
Right.
But you'll have some bookends. And we've kind of talked to you a little bit at previous meetings. Okay, well, here's this one bookend. Here's this one bookend. And as you identify, meeting the activity unit per acre is the primary goal we're trying to achieve here.
Yeah, well, it's absolutely critical.
Yes.
I don't think, I don't know if there's anything more important in this process, actually, at this point.
It's been tattooed on my forehead.
But I also wanted to ask, are, will we be looking at alternatives like putting TOD on top of Canyon Park Park and Ride? Are we looking at those types of scenarios or?
Well, yes. In fact, that's one of the things that we're going to actually come to the council, the Planning Commission of the council, is the policy-setting board agency group for our community. How much TOD should we do? And we think TOD, or I'm sorry, transit-oriented development is a really good approach in this area for a number of reasons. One, of course, we're going to have a brand-new bus rapid transit facility out here, both, from both directions, 405 and 527 from Community Transit, Swissman Line.
We're like the hub of BRT.
We are.
Just saying.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm really excited. And I'm excited you're excited because that means that you're going to stick around for a while, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Bruce.
You bet.
Councilmembers Orns.
That thought crossed through my mind too. Yay, we get Bruce for a little while longer. This is, this is a, just kind of a curiosity point. I noticed in our notes that it was stated that we already reached our target for employees, our 2035. Does that give us more squidging room or are we kind of reinventing some areas?
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
It was really interesting, and this is one of the things that we got into as this capacity analysis, is finding out how many employees we actually have within the Regional Growth Center. And we had projected out to 2035 as part of our 2015 comprehensive plan, a certain growth. And it was about 3,800 employees that we figured we would add to the Canyon Park area. We got there in, basically from 2012 until 2019. So what that means is that that helps us for our existing numbers, but we still have to meet those PSRC criteria, which we're going to mean we're going to have to add more capacity in that area to address this.
I guess my question is, is that if we're at the point, except for the transportation piece, if we're at the point where the, we can sustain the employees that are coming in right now, does that give us more creativity and flexibility for future residents and employees?
It helps. It certainly helps. And I think what it does is it also shows us two things. One is that there's a lot of interest in Canyon Park from the business community. They have a great interest in some expansion. And I think it also shows that there is some investment options here. So I think that, you know, from that standpoint, it really does help us. And of course, again, it reduces the number ultimately we have to achieve. But we still have to add more employees and residents in the area.
Okay, well, thank you. I think I'm going to be a planning commission junkie over the next few months, watching what you're, how you're chewing on things and digesting it.
You're going to be involved as well. Council's going to be getting some information as well.
That's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Olson.
I think it's really great how everyone's been excited tonight. I mean, Mr. Boyd was very excited about utilities earlier. You're excited about management, growth and planning. So it's, I don't know, it's something in the water, I guess.
Okay, I think, I think planning is much more interesting than utilities. That's because I'm not an engineer.
I was going to disagree with you, but that's because I'm an engineer, so. So the streets, and even Jeannie brought it up with the scooters being private out there. Is that going to be, you know, thought about or addressed in this phase of it?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you know, that's a really interesting historical thing. And essentially, way back when, when that business park was initially set up, the Snohomish County Council actually said, yeah, you can have private streets, but when you complete the park, you're going to turn those into public streets. And that's something that's been out there for, you know, 30 some odd years. We have been having some conversations with the Owners Association, the Canyon Park Business Association out there about that transfer and what the city would expect to have those streets looking like if we were to accept those. That's going to have to be part of this discussion.
Yeah, it's definitely part of just our whole mentality of maintaining. And so we don't want to start in the hole with, you know, these inherited streets and everything. So I think that's definitely a big point to, you know, really think about in this plan, so.
Yes.
So I'm glad you're.
The Deputy Public Works Director would agree with you 100% on that one.
Yeah, I, I, I believe it.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. That was where I was going.
Okay.
Councilmember McNeil, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce, for hanging in there, doing this study. Appreciate it. We'll see you in January.
Oh, no, you'll see me sooner than that.
Oh, really? Okay. I thought it was January. I thought you were just doing public involvement. Okay. See you soon.
Thank you.
That is the last agenda. Oh, wait, no more thing? Council conversations? Is there anybody that has council conversations? Yeah, you do. All right, go.
Might keep you here for an hour. I have a few things. NPR say, we have NPR say North Shore Parks Rec Service Area for Councilmember McAuliffe. Wanted me to say the whole name. We have a meeting tomorrow on that, to have a discussion around the levy that's coming out. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we would be having that meeting. I attended a pre-pick meeting this last week on social toxic media, social media. And I must say, it was very, very interesting. While we all need to have social media to engage with our community, it's interesting how other elected officials around the region talk about how their engagement with their constituents goes. It was interesting to hear kind of the feedback from everybody on how they engage with their community. Several people engage a lot heavily. They comment back and forth on Facebook and Twitter and things like that. It was just, it was really interesting to listen to kind of the dialogue around the table from other electeds on some of the issues they have around social media and just the use of it and how it can become very toxic. And I brought up the fact that while I have social media, I tend not to reply a lot on social media and I tend to post very little on social media. While that's a good thing, it can also be a bad thing when you're running for office or something like that, so. But it was, it was a great conversation. I encourage everybody to study up on it. I found it very interesting and helpful for me as just a, as an elected official on what I should and shouldn't say to the public and how certain things that I do say could be construed or perceived as something different than what I'm trying to say. So I found that very interesting to be part of that. I also wanted to bring up the Wayne. We have had our study session last week on Wayne. And I just, there's a couple of things that I wanted to say during that meeting, the study session, that I didn't have the opportunity to say. And I want all the council members to understand kind of how I am looking at this. And I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for our community to come together around something that we fought so hard for not so long ago, to keep within our community in perpetuity. And I think we have the opportunity to stand strong, stand together, and have a very positive outcome at the end of the day. We have a lot of state, local, county officials working hard for us. We have a lot of state, local, county officials working hard for us. I know there's some, some federal officials working on our behalf as well. And I think that we, as elected members of our community, can set the standard for how we're going to move this project forward and the way we communicate. And so I want to thank all of you for that. That was a great conversation that we had. I'm looking forward to many, many more. I'm looking forward to engaging with the community and listening to what they want. And more importantly, now being an elected official, making sure that I'm a good steward and inform my community on what it's going to take to continue to maintain that property in perpetuity from the original onset of what we were trying to do. So I thank all of you for, for your time and effort on that. Last thing I have is the, an update on the homelessness between, Initiative ILA between King County and the City of Seattle. A lot of the cities are not at this time standing and supporting it. So it looks like it may, in fact, die to some degree. So stay in tune for more information. But it looks like most of the cities will not be supporting it the way it's written at this time, so. Thank you.
So if the cities don't support it, does that mean Seattle and King County will let it die? Or will they just continue on?
Well, they can actually do it on their own because it's between them. However, there are several county council members that are not at this time ready to push it forward because they feel like the cities aren't supporting it as much as they should. And the districting, districting of the proposal, they're fighting and lobbying for how that's going to look for funding, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of things. So let me start out with our Proposition One that will be on the ballot. Councilmember McNeil spoke about it as well. It's, as you know, it's North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area Proposition One, which is the senior center. The public really needs to be educated on what Proposition One is because it's very confusing. I've been out door belling and doing phone calls. And people are going, well, this isn't the senior center. Well, yes, it is because the owners of the building is North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area. But that is, the vote in November will be for Prop One. This Prop One will be for the senior center. So we've been door belling. There's mailers coming out tomorrow. There's phone calling on Wednesday, tomorrow night, at 4:30 to 6:30. And anyone that wants to volunteer or help, we need all the help we can get because this is a very difficult educational opportunity for us in a very short period of time. So just putting that out there. I also want to recognize that we received a letter from Karen Pogue at Yakima Fruit Market. And some of it was very positive in that they were working, Sound Transit will work, continue to work with small businesses to maximize the value. They also said that Sound Transit has told us they will have more concrete information in September and that the Pogues have hired an architect and he's doing some schematics in the absence of any measurements, however, but they will try to reinvent the market on that property. And Stewart has talked with Steve Morikawa from the city. And Steve is going to come walk the property with us and look at our ideas. So I just want you to know that the Pogues are very pleased that the city is involved and that our council members have been involved as well. And finally, in your folder is the Nick of Time Foundation EKG Youth Heart Screening, November 6th at Bothell High School Gym. And please help us to let the public know that screening of our youth is critically important. And they are welcome to come. And, and there's an opportunity for them to sign up. And there'll be a review of their health history, the screening. And this actually saves young people's lives. So please get the word out for us. Thank you.
Any other conversing on this end?
I just wanted to say I was happy that people came out to speak about the study session that we had last week and bring their concerns because everyone always has different concerns. So I think the more voices that we hear that can take advantage of that public commenting period and being involved. It wasn't what I was expecting. I was expecting, you know, people not really liking the idea of utilizing the four acres. But I just rode my bike down there earlier this month and I noticed that same problem. So I was like, oh, wow, yeah, actually, that is a thing down there, so. So, yeah, but I think that's an easy, quantifiable solution. You know, it's not as heartfelt. It's something that can be technically solved with our great Public Works Department over there. So I was happy to hear different points of view. So keep coming in, keep making, keep making your public comments.
Any other conversing? No? I just wanted to weigh in just a little bit because I wasn't here at the study session, which is on purpose, by the way. I'm not at study sessions because I feel like it's a good time for you guys to talk about what you're going to be voting on once I'm gone. So there's no reason for me to weigh in. But I did want to point out to the council that I understand that the staff brought forward a package that basically said, and I think we said this multiple times, and I thought back over, I don't have the dates or anything like that. But I think we made it really clear to the staff to please bring us a specific thing. And that thing was to make sure we use those four acres in the front nine of the Wayne Golf Course, or the former Wayne Golf Course, to create an economic engine that engages the natural preservation as well as bringing revenue. And that wasn't the only thing that we were trying to do, but that's the direction we gave staff. And from what I understand, that we, we, for lack of better terms, didn't really embrace, I guess, what the staff brought forward. So I think it's a good idea that as council, at least this is my anecdotal summary, is that, you know, when we ask them to bring us a rock, we need to give them some definition around what that rock should look like so that when they bring us the wrong rock, could we just send it back and say, well, it's just a little bit bigger or smaller or whatever. But it just sounded like there was a bit of a disconnect there with the council direction. And the staff brought back what the council did ask for. But once it came back, it wasn't what the council wanted. So I think just going forward, just to try to remain in lockstep and communicate clearly and concisely to the staff about what it is that we want or what we're seeing from a policy standpoint that we need to have on the front nine of the Wayne Golf Course so that we don't just keep going back and forth with different plan sets of ideas and things like that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. That's my conversing for the night. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
The discussion on move by Deputy Mayor Second by Councilmember McAuliffe. Any discussion on the motion? See enough, let's vote. Passes. Liam, he didn't even vote. Passes four to two. McNeil and Agnew negative and Olson absent, but excused. We're adjourned.